In his neighborhood, there's a little, a little cup thing. And some, I was with some kids and they put me in, but it doesn't work. And I got sick.
Is going to be meeting for order? I think we're all here.
Full table.
If you're not here, say hi.
Yes.
Item two, at the Commissioner's request, discuss any item of concern on the regular session agenda of January the 4th, 2018. Item three, present the update on the downtown hotel construction schedule.
Yeah, Mayor and Commissioners, this will be very brief. I've spoken to Mike Quarter, who's the general contractor for Dr. Patel, and they are anxious to get started. They believe, Mike believes he'll be in next week to pick up the building permit and have something they're gonna file with the state soon on a stormwater plan or something, so, but he anticipates that as soon as, within two weeks, they maybe started with the dirt work down there. So I'm confident that will happen this month. And then he also asked if you guys would want to. He'd be glad to have a groundbreaking if you want to, and we all agreed that, well, let's, let's get something happening before we do that. So, that's really-
How about a ribbon cutting?
Yes, yeah, that's fine, too. I think once dirt work starts down there, it'll be evident to everybody something's happening and probably never have to give an update again, because people can just go down there and see what the update is. So-
Doc, on what?
That was really what I wanted to tell you during the meeting, and so it's good news. So hopefully, this month, or maybe even sooner, it'll be started.
Yay, good news.
What is the date by which they must start?
Within forty-five days of the closing.
Okay.
So, we closed on December 20th.
Right.
Right before Christmas, so, and they're well aware of that deadline.
Day of that, the first of February, somewhere in there.
I think so, yeah, a little, yeah, maybe a little past February 20th.
It's ten thirty-one, maybe.
Yeah, I don't think we'll even get close to them. But if we do, I'll be preaching out to them, but no, they're, they have a local dirt work person, I think they're out of Hennessy, so, they're anxious to get started, more anxious for them to get started.
Indeed.
We like ribbon cutting, shuttlings.
That's fine, won't hurt my feelings, just to drive on.
Okay. Is that it?
That's it. Short and sweet.
Item four, discuss Main Street Railroad Bridge signage.
Yeah, and this is specifically, Ron, Mr. Janson, you had mentioned one time you wanted to get an update on this, and I know from time to time, we've talked about it, well, we're gonna talk about what we're gonna do down there, and we're gonna talk about the accidents in Morale, you're gonna, you're gonna talk to us about it. Maybe Frank, you may follow up.
Well, I, I might mention this, the reason I brought it up is that I, I got to driving through there of some regularity, and noticed that the, you know, we, a few years ago, we went to the trouble and expense of painting those artificial teeth up there, which I don't, I don't know if that ever stopped anybody, but I know we've had several incidents since those were put up there. But the, the lights that are on there, I bet were put on there in the forties. There's two little, two little dim yellow lights there in the center of the bridge, and a little sign that's about, you know, maybe two foot by two foot. And, and my suggestion was, we need to put up a much larger sign, it needs to be up on the bridge where you can actually see it, and not stuck down there at street level. And, and we have so much brighter lighting now that can attract attention, so, that was basically what I was recommending, but I'm sure the engineering came up with something much more creative.
You, you are gonna at least partially like what we're doing, because we're, it's involved signage.
We're moving the lights to the eyes of the sharks?
Yeah.
Okay, next step, I like that.
I like that.
All right, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners and City Manager. This is basically the Main Street Bridge, as you can see, the shark paint and stuff like that. These are the statistics from Police Department, back in sixteen, about four of them in seventeen, about seven. These are the approaches we can take to minimize the accidents and provide a height, the, putting a stri, striping on the street, and the street signs, more, more shrines, and also radar detection, and also video detection. This is the location where it can go, this is the bridge location, and these are the street signs, this is the location where it, uh, striping. This is the first type, striping details, so we are going to put a stripes, basically letters or symbol, because it's a two-lane road, two sides, so we are going to evaluate what is the best approach to put, whether letters or signs. This is traveling from east to west.
Morale, that street where you turn south or turn left?
Yes, sir.
When you go south toward Gariot?
Yep.
I think that's a dirt road, or chat road.
That's right next to the OGN, sir.
It's paved, it, it veers off to the right, and that road's basically closed, but the, the third is, is paved more.
I understand that, do you, are you gonna keep them off of that chat road?
It's closed.
Truck, trucks aren't gonna go down there.
Yes, I think the road, I think, I can't see the street name from here, but-
It's the third street.
It's Third Street, it's not Row Road Avenue. Row Road Avenue is the one that's blocked off on both ends.
That's correct.
And, and you can see on the Main Street side, they're pretty much, the same entrances, it's, it's a wide entrance there, so you're not too far out of your way to take Third Street, straight up, straight south to Gariot.
At least they'd gotten off of Main Street.
I mean, technically, this is not a truck route, so-
I can't hear you.
Technically, this is not a truck route, we are-
I understand.
We're trying to divert truck traffic that, for whatever reason, has found themselves on Main Street about ready to hit the bridge. And so, Morale's talking about putting signage there on Fourth Street to tell them, and then have an exit sign that tells them, turn here on Third. And we're actually talking about painting those on the street, right?
Yes, sir, painting on the street. This is coming on the front, from the west to east, so right next to Grand, it's gonna be low bridge sign, and also they are gonna exit right under Second Street.
So they get a warning when they get to the beginning of the block?
Block, yep.
And then there's another-
Sign to exit.
On the street sign that says, turn now.
Right. This is one option, the second option is put this, more signs on the street. The third option is put a radar detector, and as soon as it hits the height, it's gonna lighten up the signs on the bridge and stuff like that, so it's an option.
That sounds like a lot of money to dumb down something that people aren't supposed to be doing in the first place.
Yeah, so our efforts are to start with the, or to continue the efforts of the shark being painted on there, to paint on the streets, kinda like it is on I-35 and I-40. If you, you see it says I-35, you know you're in the right lane, I-40 in this lane, we're, I envision a sign that says, whatever's gonna say that's undoubtedly approved, that says no trucks, maybe the truck and a symbol slash through it, and then exit now, or turn right, that's it.
Are you gonna show us what happens if you're going east? You don't, you don't, you've only shown it-
If you back up a couple slides, Morale, I think-
Right here, sir. This is the Grand Street, Grand Avenue, going east.
East towards, uh, Second Street.
This is the bridge, bridge is right here, so it's gonna-
Main Street going, Bridge going east.
But what's on the other side of the bridge, just where it's at?
Going east, uh-
That domain is only showing you going west.
Are you gonna do that, are you gonna do that on both sides?
This is the east, yeah, that's going east.
There's the other side.
That other side was going west.
Oh, okay.
Or was on the west side.
Right here is the Fourth Street, coming from the, where, east to west, fourth, and this is Third Street, so they are taking a left turn when coming from east to west. When coming from west to east, they are taking a right turn on Second Street.
Is Second Street big enough to handle a truck pulling right?
Does it, why, is all that wide enough?
Two rights and a left there?
It's a line up.
It's really narrow.
Yes.
Especially on a busier day when there's traffic there for the ballpark and-
A truck would have to be, I wouldn't be able to do it, but an experienced truck driver would probably be in the inside lane, and they would take it wide.
An experienced truck driver wouldn't hit a bridge-
You're right.
With big flashing lights on.
You're right. An experienced truck driver wouldn't be down there on Main Street, probably.
And I guess most of the time, it hasn't been a semi, it's been like a-
Box trucks.
Yeah, box truck.
It's usually box trucks.
It's been quite a few semis.
There's been a lot of semis.
One, one of the reasons why they get down on this street is because the, their trains block that track up there, and some of the truck drivers decide they're gonna try to get around the train by going down to Main Street, they're familiar with that bridge there, but, and like I said, I, I don't know what's gonna keep them from attempting to do that, unless, you know, they're smart enough to know their truck's too high.
Well, we could put up some signage there that say no trucks, but people can avoid that, or, or-
Well, I'll tell you this, one day there, we, actually for a while, we did put a sign in the, right in the middle of the street, on the yellow stripe, right in the middle of the street, that said no trucks, and guess what, a truck drove right past it and smacked into the bridge. So this argument has been going on for a long time, people are constantly saying, the city needs to do something, the city needs to do something. So before, it was just a gray bridge, so then suggested we paint it something, you know, eye-catching or whatever on it, so we put the shark teeth up there. But people complain about that, and things that look stupid, whatever, I don't care. But the deal is, there are no less than five warning signs on that bridge right now. First of all, it's got a big huge picture painted on it, you can't think that's something else. It's got a big yellow line across the bottom, it says the words low clearance, it has flashing lights, and it has a red and, or a yellow and black line down the middle, so I don't know what else, and when, and like I said, when there was a sign in the middle of the street that said no trucks, a truck still hit the bridge. So I don't know what else we can really do, I mean, I don't care if we paint it bright yellow and put big red lights on it, whatever, but the whole thing about it is, we're spending a lot of time and money talking about something people shouldn't be doing in the first place. So to me, this is all enabling people to break the law more, because they shouldn't be driving down the street in the first place. There's nobody that lives under that bridge that needs a delivery. No trolls need deliveries under that bridge.
And so it was important, we wanted to show there's, while there's been eleven accidents in the last two years, we have bigger problems in sections other places than in that bridge, so.
There you go.
I, I think that at a reasonable cost, we can paint the street and-
What's, what's the cost for, for the-
I don't know that we've tallied that up yet.
To paint deep.
But we're talking probably a, a few thousand dollars, because I think we're talking about getting some templates.
I, I tally that up.
Okay.
If we do the-
I'm Frank Sweet, I'm supervisor tech services. If we do a no truck symbol, and we do a-
Frank, if you go ahead and talk into the microphone, you're gonna be on TV, so everybody will hear you.
Oh, TV. Okay, Frank Sweet, tech services supervisor. We have tallied this up, I was gonna try to get the emblems to make it more vibrant, more colors. The no truck emblem with a low bridge in the words, and then a all trucks emblem with exit right, is gonna be roughly ten thousand, to do all eight signs. And I'm wanting to put each sign in each lane, just for wear and tear, that way, you know, ones, if one wears, another one don't, it's still, it's still there, so that'd be eight signs total. And if we just do strictly the words, the letters only, it's about five thousand.
I definitely think we need to do something, but I think, I think it's crazy that we even had this problem in the first place, but-
Ten thousand dollars isn't that much in our world.
It's not.
Well, my intent is to paint the street, and then let's see what happens, and hopefully it will go down from seven to something lesser.
Can we find out how many accidents we had for like the three years before we painted it?
I'm sure we can.
Because, um, because there for a while, there were, they were like a law, but, I mean, because I know, there were a couple of people that were counting them, and it, in like two or three years, it had gotten up to like forty-seven or fifty or something like that. And then, um, like over the course of a few years, I had gotten up to like a bunch. And so, I don't know if, I don't know if anything that we do is gonna deter it, other than, a lot of people have suggested putting a bar across that people, that they would hit first, but I don't think that's feasible. I think that costs way too much money, and clutters and junks up everything.
I agree with you, it's a very wide street, yes.
It would be-
I'm taking all liability, if he gets in a wreck, everybody hits their pole, I'm not-
Yeah, I think that, see, I don't think that would work either.
I think technology is part of what brought us here, and I'll, I'll bet every one of those truck drivers has a Garmin or similar-
They do, they get guy, they get sent down that, a lot of them do.
Is there a way that we can, I mean, is there a way you can get to the people that provide that code to say, not authorized for trucks or something, so it'll flash up, instead of, oh, if you wanna get around the crane, go around the corner?
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't know. There's, there's a couple of other things, too, that, you know, and if you wanna know how many accidents there've been, I've been told that Bob Barry has pictures of every one of them.
Eli, yeah, Eli's the one that was counting.
Yeah, it's not Bob, it's Eli.
Yeah, Eli had a-
Anyway, but the, and, and I don't know whether this is true or not either, but I've been told that you can drive under, you can take the, a truck that will drive under it from the east side, that can return and not get under from the west side, because of the different slope on the street.
That is correct.
So, you know, that, that's a little bit of a trap there, but I, all I was recommending, and I could say, if, if you look at the signage that's on there, the sign, you know, other than the big shark teeth, and, and even the stuff we painted up there on the top of the bridge, we've already, they've already hit, they've hit it so many times, they've worn off the yellow stripe. But, but the, it, to me, we could put, we could put better lighting on there, and, and put a larger sign that I think would probably get the job done, but, you know, we've made a lot of strides in the, in the warning lights since nineteen forty, whenever those were put on there.
Honestly, I think that whatever we do, we're probably gonna have, it's, it's highly likely we may still have three or four years, simply because-
Stupidity.
You pointed out, I wouldn't call that, but people-
Rampant stupidity. But you can, Ron.
Disoriented and-
Can we put like, um, could we put like a strip of LED lights across the bridge?
I think we could, I think the cost may be more.
Let's not spend much money on this.
Talk to the railroad.
You know, like what we have on the Ferris wheel, that didn't cost that much.
No, no, but this is railroad, I mean, anything that touches the railroad bridge is, I mean, you know what happened on, on Maple?
Well, that was my whole point from the beginning, is this isn't even our deal, this belongs to the railroad.
Well, and on Maple Street, where the, the other-
I know, they don't care.
The other railroad underpass near there, um-
On Elm?
On, sorry, Elm, it got nailed by a bucket truck, you know, a couple of years ago, a year ago now, and they, they came in and, and put a much, a much different bridge in place, I mean, they replaced it with something the railroad did, that takes up a lot less space. I'm not sure they ever actually got a new height sign on there, but if you drive through it, I mean, there are a couple extra feet of clearance from what there used to be.
They use narrower beams.
Uh-huh, they did, yeah, and it would be, I mean, not that I'm gonna hold my breath, but it would be lovely for the railroad to come in and do something similar on Main, again.
That'd a double track.
We figured out that that bridge had been there since like nineteen thirties.
No, I think it's, I think it's the same as on Main.
I think it's the same one.
Yeah.
Whatever they built it out of, it's built very solid.
Yeah, we should build everything.
Uh-huh.
Because it's indestructible.
Since you did the cost estimates, you showed us one of the options was the laser thing that goes across the, how much was that?
I did not look into that.
Yeah, we can look into that.
It looks like it'd be pretty expensive.
That would be, yes, and then-
But I mean, that would certainly stop it.
Well, but it doesn't, it just flashes up a sign, I mean, the person can still drive.
Well, and, and, and in my, in my opinion, this right here, if that doesn't work, and somebody hits the bridge, then the liability might be on us, I don't know, is what I thought of, so.
Yeah. I don't think we have very much-
I don't, I, I think we start with putting it on the street.
Well, you know, we have the, the Police Department uses the speed limit signs that flash, even if we just got a, without the laser, if we just got a sign that says, flash low bridge or something, I mean, I don't know.
Like the two that we have?
Like the ones that are already there?
Yeah. Bigger ones.
Well, we will do something soon, and then we will come back to you and see what it, what happens with statistics.
We'll come back in a couple of years, have the same conversation again.
And Brian, if you could look up, what's the statistics been the last few years? Do you already have it, or? Okay, thank you.
Can I enter, Jay?
Yeah, sure, come on up, you can be on TV, too.
You're painting on the street, keep in mind, these trucks are moving fifty to sixty feet per second, by the time they read this on the roadway, they've already hit the bridge. Keep, keep that in mind in your decision.
We will, we'll look at signage, I recognize, I agree with Commissioner Wilson, I'm not sure anything we're gonna do is gonna lower that.
Do we need to move it back a block and do it on the block before that? Or, or do you think they'll even see it at all?
They're coming in at fourth.
Between them, it's twenty-five, right?
So they're coming from the west.
Between twenty-five and thirty, you're moving between forty-seven feet per second and about fifty-five feet per second.
And they're coming in off fourth from Gariot to get around the railroad tracks, so we only really have a block to start out with.
If they don't, if they don't see a big sign painted on the street, then they're probably not seeing people walking in front of them, and cars parked, I, I think we're talking, it's a pretty big painted sign.
Six by six.
Six foot by six foot, I think they'll see that.
I, I don't doubt they're gonna see it.
Just whether they can stop in time.
To get the semi stopped in a timeframe before hitting the bridge is my concern.
And then, if they have that block before the bridge, say they see the sign, they stop, there's nowhere to go. I mean, there's nowhere to turn, there's nowhere to-
Well, we have to turn right before the, the bridge, the idea was to turn them, say, turn them right if you're going east, and turn them left if you're going west. So, I, I think we're gonna try some signage, and we'll come back with statistics and see if we're effective.
I think we have a picture of-
In, in any event, I think we're, you're probably gonna verify for me that we've had probably between four and seven, probably every year since, since they built the bridge, probably.
I asked for stats from two thousand and ten, I should have them by the end of this meeting.
When I get them, I'll send them out to you so you guys can see what the stats are.
I mean, there for a while, it was almost a weekly occurrence, before we painted the bridge.
Say that again, and good, maybe it's-
They're working on those stats from two thousand and ten to two thousand and fifteen, I should have those by the end of this meeting.
You know that bridge has its own Facebook page, have you seen it?
I did not, no.
It's hilarious.
So maybe it keeps track of statistics.
It does, and there's pictures of all of it. It's Eli.
So we can play music and get them to point something.
I think it'd be funny to have a video.
The trucking company will know how many there were, or the insurance company.
We talked about getting a scoreboard up there.
All right, let's go to item five. Discuss twenty eighteen recreational opportunities, calendar, and proposal to revise park shelter rental fees. Kevin, is that you?
Kevin? Yep. That is I. Mayor and Commissioners, um, let's see if we can work this right. We have twenty-eight picnic shelters throughout the park system in Eden. Of those shelters, ninety-five percent are rented out on Saturday and Sundays, typically from March through October. Seventy-two percent of all reservations are on Saturdays. In twenty seventeen, we had two hundred and eighty-six shelter reservations. A hundred and eighty-nine of those are made at six shelters in town. Metal Lake South Shelter Number One, that's down by the Carousel Building, Metal Lake, oh, I'm sorry, Shelter Number One is over by the tennis courts on the south side of Metal Lake. Metal Lake North Shelter Number One is the one down by the Carousel Building. Metal Lake North Shelter Six is the one by the Dog Park. Government Springs Shelters Number One and Three are the two closest to the Circle Drive, by the playground there, and then Crossland Park Shelter Number One. And you can see the number of times that they were rented in twenty seventeen. Currently, shelters are reserved for the whole day, so you get them from the time the park opens till the park closes. Three of the six shelters, all the ones at Metal Lake, are typically reserved three months in advance. Metal Lake South Shelter Number One, if you want it for something in the fall, you typically need to reserve it by February, because by March, it's pretty much booked up every, every Saturday and Sunday throughout the summer. Currently, the Metal Lake shelters and the Crossland Shelter, we charge forty-five dollars a day to rent. Government Springs, we charge twenty-five dollars. What I would like to propose is, these shelters are rented for the whole day, but they're typically only used for a small portion of the day, which eliminates a lot of people from the opportunity to use the shelters, and then it creates also conflict when people go in, there's nobody at the shelter, so they set their party up, and then the people that actually paid for the shelter show up, and now everybody's gotta change hands, and we get phone calls, and I know the Police Department gets some phone calls, it sometimes gets a little challenging. So what I would like to do is, we reserve the shelters for the morning, and then the afternoon, and then if you wanna reserve for the whole day, you could, it would just cost you more money, but still keeping those same rights. The challenges that we face in our office, our Friday afternoon is our busiest day for shelter reservations, and everybody wants a shelter for that weekend. So, this would open up another opportunity for people to get the shelters, they might have to change their plans and do it in the morning rather than the afternoon like they wish, but it would allow additional usage on these six shelters. Then, so if we charge forty-five dollars for the half-day, rather than charging ninety for the full day, give a ten-dollar discount, so we charge eighty for the full day, because there are groups that wanna use it all day long. And then I also would like to, I'll go back a slide, Government Springs raise the rates on those thirty-five dollars from twenty-five. We are installing new grills at all of these six shelters, so we're updating the amenities that are there, we're putting in a larger grill. Right now, they're about like that big, and they're actually underneath the shelter, we're gonna put them out a little bit, and put a bigger grill in, so larger groups can utilize the space. So again, Government Springs, rather than being seventy dollars, will have a six, or a ten-dollar discount for an all-day rental.
Kevin, do you put up signage and tell who's rented?
Well, in, in part of doing this is, we will have to, I, I made up one, and I left it in my office, it's a, a wooden box, and there's a sheet of plexiglass in there, and then it'll have a permit, so you'll know whether or not that shelter's reserved, if it's not reserved, we'll have a, a piece in there that'll say shelters open, you know, first come, first served, something like that, in each shelter, because a lot of people don't make reservations, they just plan their, their outing and show up at the park.
But if you're just at the park, hanging out, and you happen to go take your picnic lunch there, that's not, that doesn't count as, like, needing a reservation.
No, typically, the, the reservations, if you're planning a family picnic, or, you know, we suggest people reserve the shelters regardless. I'll tell ya, on a busy weekend at Metal Lake, every shelter's rented, every single one. And we have about an eight-week window where Metal Lake is, you're not gonna be able to rent anything out there. Crossland is our next most popular, and I think that has to do with, you know, they're the bigger shelters, you can get more people in them.
Kevin, would you have someone out there on the weekends to-
Yes.
Change it up?
We, we have staff on the weekends now, and they come in in the morning, and they clean the bathrooms and check the shelters, we would switch that, from them coming in the morning to them coming in, so our half-days would end at one, and start at two, so we'd have that hour in between to clean the shelters out, check the bathrooms, make sure they're stocked, so we'll have that fluctuation to, to change that time schedule with the staff.
I have a question on that. Is there any way you could scooch that morning one till, till two, and then the other one from like three to ten?
Yeah.
Because, my question is, if people wanna have like a lunch thing at noon, then they're only gonna have it for an hour and have to hurry up and get out.
Yeah.
And so if you did it till two, then they would maybe be like, well, we have it till two, and they would have a-
And we can be as flexible as, as possible with the, the times, these are just times I took off in other communities.
It just splits more in half, I think.
Yeah. And typically, they sit empty in the mornings.
Right.
You know, it's, it's the evening ones that are-
They're busy.
Really popular.
My, my only suggestion is that, I, I think eighty dollars seems a little too stiff, I, I, I would like to see us charge seventy dollars for the full day. My recommendation.
Okay. We can certainly modify it as you like. What we'll do is we'll bring back with your consensus, uh, what we, and your feedback, an ordinance for you to approve, maybe even at the next meeting. I, I will say, Commissioner Jansen, I doubt that there's anybody that's, there's very few people that would probably rent it all day, because as Kevin has said, most people don't use it all day. So, but we can make it seventy dollars or whatever you want it to be.
With the gazebo seventy-five, isn't it?
The gazebo seventy-five.
Maybe make them seventy-five.
We, we can do that.
And I mean, I know I've run into that at Government Springs, when I've wanted to do, like if I've had an event that I've needed to do in the evening, and like if a wedding has it booked, even if their wedding is at noon, there's no way, and I've, I mean, we've run into this whole thing about, well, you can't have it because I'm having my wedding at noon even though you don't need it till six.
Right. And, and that allows...
And it's just stupid.
It, it's just going to allow more people access to our facilities. Because right now it's, it's really, you know, yeah, I can't allow you to go have your picnic there because Mr. Jansen has a reservation, but his plans aren't to go out until six PM, but I don't know that.
Right.
You know, we don't rent them by the time slot. We rent them for the day. Uh, so it just allows more flexibility for our citizens to use our facilities, um, more efficiently. Um, we'll move on to, uh, some recreation programming that we have planned for twenty eighteen. As you're aware, we have a gymnasium available to us at Champion Park. Um, we've been working really hard to get that building, um, up to date and some, uh, safety features, um, installed. And we're to the point now where we can start offering some programming down there. And it's been very, uh, important in my scope to offer some, uh, programs to the community, especially that side of town, and, and give the kids a place and, um, to have some recreation opportunities and a place, a safe place to play.
Is that the one next to Wilson School? It was the Wilson School?
Yes. So some of the things that we're planning on are Monday and Wednesdays, having an open gym, um, from five PM to seven. And this would be free play for basketball, volleyball, soccer, um, hula hoops. We have a, a multitude of different athletic, uh, toys that they can use. Um, and all of these times will be staffed by, um, Parks and Recreation staff. Um, on Mondays, Tuesdays, and Wednesdays, right now, we have a Double Dutch Camp that goes from three-thirty to five. It's a free, uh, jump rope clinic for, uh, girls aged six to fourteen. It is instructed by a volunteer from the community, and, uh, they're doing a graduation in a, like a demonstration in May.
Quite a bit of participation in that?
Uh, about fifteen, Courtney. Yeah, so about fifteen girls are, are participating. And what's really neat about this is the, the lady that's putting this program on, if the kids don't have transportation, she picks them up from, uh, some of the different community centers and after-school programs and brings them to, uh, her program. So it's, it's really kind of neat. Uh, the girls are learning a lot. If you've, would have watched them when they first started, most of them couldn't even jump rope. And now they're actually starting, uh, last week I saw they were starting with two ropes now. So it's really neat to, to see the girls, uh, excelling. Um, another program that we're going to be doing is, uh, like a Parents' Night Out, which will function as a, like a drop-in service, uh, for the community for a couple hours of, uh, childcare. So mom and dad can maybe go out and have dinner alone without the kids. And, um, we, we still have some steps that we have to, uh, work through with legal and, uh, on some of this stuff to, to make sure that we're, we're following the, the rules and, and whatnot. So that's going to start hopefully in February, and it'll be from six to nine PM like one day a month. Um, and we'll do free play games with them and some different age-appropriate activities. We will limit, uh, age as well. We don't want to do, uh, infants and that stuff. So, um, another program is, uh, like Family Night Out, where we may do games, we may do, watch a movie, have popcorn. Um, and again, those will be once a month on a Friday or a Saturday. And it's just different activity for the whole family to do, no cost. Um, so we're hoping those turn out pretty well. Um, No School Adventure Days. This is kind of a program that we were looking at for days while, while school is in session, for those days when they have like teacher service days or, uh, national holidays that the children are out of school. And this would give them an opportunity to get out of the house and, uh, get out of mom and dad's hair for a little while, maybe come out and do some free activity. And we'll, we'll have structured play for the different age groups. Um, having athletic programs that are age-appropriate, crafts, educational classes. Um, and then this is something that maybe we could work with the fire department to have them bring out a truck and, you know, have the kids do stuff like that, or the police department and different, uh, organizations throughout town. Um, maybe we get Benny's Barn to come out and, you know, bring a couple horses, just different activities for the kids. Um, and then a youth activity time on Thursdays, um, from three-thirty to five. Again, this will be more of a structured, it won't be a free play like an open gym. Those will be maybe a little bit more structured, um, athletic programs, dodgeball, volleyball, where we actually, you know, work with the kids on skills and, and stuff like that. And we can bring in different, uh, community members. We have a community member that, uh, is willing to come in and, and do like instructional time on Taekwondo. So... Other things that are happening, we have the...
Kevin, get back a minute.
Yes, sir.
What months are you planning on doing this?
Right now, we are planning January, February, March. We have a calendar set for those three months. The first week in March, we will plan out the next three months. So we're hoping to get this as an ongoing program, uh, to serve the community. And, and we're planning other things that won't be just at the gym. Um, a Easter Five-K. You know, and just different programs where we can get people out in their parks and actively doing stuff in our parks. Fit Club, this is a, uh, Integris Bass, Garfield County, and I believe there's, uh, the Rural Health Coalition T-Set. Uh, this is a thing that they're starting January ninth, hopefully. Um, I haven't heard really a whole lot about it recently, but we're hoping that that's going to happen. It's Tuesdays and Thursdays from five forty-five to six thirty. And they're going to bring in, um, instructors to do yoga and different, uh, aerobic-type fitness programs. Um, we also have the Enid High School Band Ball scheduled for, uh, February. And we are going to again start renting this facility for, uh, parties and events. Some of the events that are scheduled between January to March, we have Beards doing, uh, braids at brunch. This is a do, daddy-daughter activity, and it's, um, a time for dads to learn how to do their daughter's hair. Um, we do have a group, Baby Being a Better You. They are volunteering to come in and, and do that for us. That'll be from ten to twelve on, uh, January twenty-seventh. Uh, we have a dodgeball tournament scheduled for February seventeenth, uh, one PM to five. Uh, a community craft fair on March tenth from eleven to four. Uh, Spring Break Day Camp, this is something that we'd like to do that, again, we're, we're, there's some things that we have to finalize and, and make sure we're on the up and up with all this. But during that week of March nineteenth, when the kids are off of school, offering a day camp, a structured program for those five days. It'll be a hundred-dollar program for the week, or, um, we will have, you can just do one day or whatever. So, um, we have our recreation program, Rec One. All this stuff will be up on that, and you can register for all that stuff. Um, hopefully, we should have that all set by next week and ready to, to go out to the public. Some additional information, first of all, come to the park side. Um, we have a, uh, three-month event program, um, that is out right now. It's on enid.org backslash Parks Calendar. Um, and again, that first week of March, we're going to have everything set up for the next three months, and we're going to try and keep it out in front as much as possible. Online registration, again, through our recreation program. Um, any of our activities, we are asking for registration, um, whether they're free or not, so that we know how many staff we have to have and the supplies that we need to purchase and, and stuff like that. The facility will be available to rent for events such as birthday parties or small sporting events. We do have a capacity of three hundred. The building does not have a sprinkler system in it, and the fire marshal, the list, that's what our limit was until we get that taken care of. Um, and our goal of our programings is offering a free or low-cost program to the city Enid youth. And then as this continues to hopefully grow and develop, we can offer some adult programs and, uh, maybe even some senior programs and really start, uh, exploring the, the needs of the community recreational wise. And then somebody likes cats. And it wasn't me, so. Um, are there any questions on the programs or thoughts or anything about what we presented or?
Sounds awesome.
Sounds great.
Yeah. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, are we ready for the next item?
Yes. Item six, discuss Dr. Martin Luther King Junior holiday event schedule.
Yes, we have members of the MLK Commission here, including the chairperson. Pat, do you want to come up and, and say, and talk about the schedule?
First of all, I'd like to thank you, thanks to the commission for inviting us to speak about our, uh, Martin Luther King, uh, events. And I'm going to talk about the prayer breakfast. This year, we're having our very first prayer breakfast, and we are inviting everyone out, and especially our wonderful commissioners. Our mayor is really a big supporter of us. And so we would like the rest of you to come on and join in. Uh, the menu is sausage, yours truly will be frying sausage, uh, scrambled eggs, pancakes, uh, fruit, coffee, juice. And so, um, and our program is really full-packed. I think you will really enjoy it. And it's from eight-thirty to ten-thirty at the Central Assembly of God Family Life Center, and that's twelve oh two West Oxford. So we're asking, uh, all of you, come and support us and come see what we're about. And we're celebrating Dr. Martin Luther King's fiftieth, uh, the, the, we're honoring the, the fiftieth year of his death. And so it's really kind of a special year for us. And the tickets are ten dollars, seven dollars, um, if you buy them now. Okay, and children's are three dollars. Is that correct? Okay, all right, thank you.
And I would like to invite all of you to come to the march, which will be held January the thirteenth, and it will be at the, uh, Central National Bank Civic Center. That's where we start. And we'll march around the block and back to the, uh, Event Center. And then once we're back at the Event Center, we have a program that you're all invited to come. And we let you know that our mayor is always there to give us our welcome. So if you want to support your mayor, come hear him give a welcome, and we appreciate it. And we, and our program consists of the opera singer Leona Mitchell, some of the highlights she'll be singing, some of you know her. Uh, we also have a keynote speaker, Dr. Ed Rollins. He's a local here in Enid. He'll be speaking. We also have a post and essay contest that we like for all the children in the community to be involved in. And they're, uh, we give them prizes for their poster and essay contests, so that'll be, uh, going on also at the program. And we also give away, uh, diversity awards. One of the other commissioners there are usually head up that, so like to come see him, see him there. The diversity award's given out. So we have a lot of things that we, uh, really enjoy at this program. We would love to see all of you there. I know maybe all of you can't make it, but again, it's, uh, at four o'clock, uh, January the thirteenth at the Civic Center, the Ballroom. That really sounds good. It's in the Ballroom, so we'd like to see you come in the Ballroom. And if you're going to be there, we would like you to let Stephanie know so she can reserve you a table. Kind of get, give her an idea of who's there, uh, she'll reserve that table for you. Also, we like to, some of our sponsors are like Park Avenue. They always, they give us big, uh, the YWCA, they've helped us, Security National Bank, the Enid Pet Hospital, Dr. Maver Dental, the Arts Group, uh, West Side Church of God in Christ. These are some of our sponsors that's really helped us, and we really appreciate them. Uh, Ed Rollins, Christian Counseling, and Al Jensen, and there's other supporters that we have. So if you want to be a supporter, if you don't have the funds, just come and be there. And we appreciate the city of Enid because they're the ones that sponsor our meal, delicious. So if you want a delicious meal at the end of the program, there's a nice meal. It's free. Now, this is free. You just come and enjoy, and we would love to see some of y'all. I'm going to look at these faces so I can see if any of y'all show up. I will be there. We thank you for inviting us here. If there's any questions, see us afterwards. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item seven, we will now adjourn and meet upstairs at six-thirty.
Thank you for watching the Enid City Commission Study Session. All meetings are broadcast on local cable channel twelve and in high definition on channel one twelve. In addition, the study session is live streamed on the web at enidtv dot O R G. If you have any questions or comments regarding this broadcast, please visit the city of Enid website at enid dot O R G.